Please rise for the invocation by Reverend Mark Andrews from St. Luke's United Methodist Church. Filling in for Reverend Andrews will be Councilman Danny Seaver.
Let's pray. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this beautiful weather today. We've suffered through some bad rainy days to get to this point. We appreciate it. We know the rain will help the flowers grow and make our feelings soar. Thank you so much for the privilege of serving the citizens of Hickory. And thanks for all the things and many blessings you've shown upon us over the years. Be with us tonight and impart some of that wisdom to us to make better decisions for the city of Hickory. In your name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I'm going to ask all of the council to join me in welcoming tonight an outstanding group of young ladies from Hickory High who made us very proud by going down to Chapel Hill and winning the state championship. Come on, guys. I'm going to have Barbara Hales to come forward, please. The AP Coach of the Year for North Carolina. And these don't have names, right?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'm going to read the overall proclamation. And in this proclamation, I hope you have enough. This has been bound in this manner. I'm thinking a lot of these young ladies will have to go to the Escholotian. Whereas Hickory High School girls, after an unbeaten season, have the title as North Carolina's High School Athletic Association 2015 Women's 3A Basketball State Champion. And whereas the game was built at Carmichael Auditorium in Chapel Hill on March 14th. Whereas the Hickory High School girls' basketball team is coached by Barbara Hales, Assistant Coach Alice Alicia Abernathy, Assistant Coach Jason Stevens, and Assistant Coach Walt Young. And whereas the members of the girls' basketball team are, and we're going to go through these names in a minute, and this is my own here, but and whereas, I believe this is true, you correct me if I'm wrong, we're the only girls' team to go undefeated in North Carolina this year.
I believe you're right.
I believe that's right. I think there was one boys' team that went undefeated. I don't even know if there was one. If they did, we could have beat them. Okay. With that, we can do that. I don't know who's taking pictures or how you want to take us. The coach will get a picture here of the overall plaque. And now, we're going to let you call the girls up and I'm going to get them to just walk around and shake hands with... John, Mick, come over here. Get over here. Shake hands with our attorney manager and all council. And then I'm going to give each one with a key and their special individual.
They should keep them all on their section.
And then you need to stay up here for a little while.
That's right. It doesn't have to be very often.
Katie Yasmin was All-State and All-Regional Most Valuable Player. Every one of these girls has always been round with applause, so let's give it to her.
She was the Greater Area Player of the Year as well, Hickory High.
And she's going to go to school, I believe, in my home state, going to Norfolk State, aren't you?
Yes.
Thank you.
DeNate Witherspoon.
This young lady was the Most Valuable Player at the state championship game. And...
She's been on AT Allstate.
An AP Allstate also. Way to get them up. Now, it was exciting. Now, the wedding game was the most amazing game I've ever heard of. This team had lost one game all year. They'd beaten everybody by 30 or 40 points. And had this one gala, I know the coach doesn't want me to say this, but had this one gala that was really good. I mean, she's going to Carolina. She's averaging 30 points a game or something crazy. And a reporter asked Barbara Hales right before the final games, said, "Well, do you think you'll have a way to possibly handle this gala?" And Barbara said, "Yeah." The whole team only got 13 points. Okay. Your turn, Barbara.
One shine. Hi, Derek Carr. Amaya McLean.
And she is one of the several that are back next year, right?
Right. She sure is.
How about the JV team?
Oh, they're not here, but they were excellent, so we should be in good shape.
Good.
Anthony Rooks.
Junior and back next year, right? Congratulations.
Autumn Williams. Sedajah Tips.
I call her the human backboard racer. 21 rebounds in the championship game.
She's also on the All-State team.
An Allstate.
Well, it's the championship for the Allstate team. Darren Abernathy, she tries to slide in here a little late.
You gotta kind of come behind your teammates here. You got their backs. Congratulations.
She'll be back in a few months. She's good at doing that, too.
Okay.
We are missing Victoria Eckert. She's at a soccer match, plays soccer. And Kiana Perdosa, she is a manager for our lacrosse team. Is that it? Have we missed another of those? Oh, we got Top Top. Yeah. Top Mom should be here as well. I don't know if she told me when she was going to be responsible. Does she play anything with these women? Okay. She's a freshman. So, we'll have her for three more years.
Well, great. And this is for your office, Coach.
Oh, I like that.
And an official roadside sign like this has been placed just right there at Hickory High. So, that belongs there.
We do have to announce, you know, we do have some other coaches, too. Alicia Abernathy, Jason Stevens had to be, these coaches at Norview. And then Walt Young, someone who's in the police department, Walt, he served here many years. He's at the Beach Station. And of course, TJ Tip was our video.
Takes a lot of... We got everything?
We got a picture.
We got a picture, yeah.
Ready?
One more round of applause.
Here's one of those. Okay. Do I have a picture?
Yes. That mine or yours?
Yours.
Me and Danny sharing.
And today, Hickory High graduate and senior at Western Carolina, JT Poston, won the Southern Conference Championship. Any persons requesting to be heard? Motion to approve the minutes? Oh, excuse me. I'm sorry. We do have Mr. Cliff Moon.
Cliff Moon, 2925 Eighth Street Court, Northeast Hickory. Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Crone, Mr. Berry. I just want to make a very quick plea. I had the privilege, as many of you did, a couple of weeks ago, of being at the Chamber of Commerce's event on the future of Hickory and listened to the presentations, as I know you did, and to Mr. Berry's presentation as well. And was greatly informed by all of those things. But I noticed, one of the things I noticed in, and I've seen this before, and you have too, in the Young Professionals survey that was done, which was a great survey, I thought, and got a lot of folks to do that. We all know that, and you know this as well, better than I, but even, but we all know that we have this issue of young people leaving this community for a number of years, and we want to get them back, and we want to get them to stay. And hopefully, things like winning basketball tournaments will also help those kinds of things, state championships. But many things do. But I want to make a really brief plea, because one of the things that came out of that survey was that folks in my age bracket, 65 and up, and I'm not making this plea on the basis of me being that age. I'm actually for getting more and more young people, and I have a daughter who's 34 and starting a business here. But I am very interested in the fact that no matter what we do, according to that, to the surveys and the information that's out there, the projections from the Council of Government and so on, we're going to grow in this age demographic. We're going to have more people. And as we do, as this week, you start the Bond Commission meetings, and as we move forward with the Boost Hickory projects, I really, really hope that we will also keep in mind all the time of the opportunities that we're going to have to not only keep and attract, but even attract people in my generation, to make this the place that they retire. Recently, I met with a retired Air Force Colonel who told me that we were really missing an opportunity of trying to get, really recruit, people from the military, particularly people who were like majors, colonels, and higher, to come to Hickory and retire. That they look for communities like this. They really, in his case, did not want to go to Charlotte and live. He wanted to live in a place like this that was an hour from the mountains, a day trip up the mountains, an hour from the airport that he could get to, because he travels all over the world still. But as he pointed out, he brings a six-figure retirement income here. He brings a job. And yet, he also has the opportunity to get involved in the community as well. So again, I know we will, I know you will, not lose sight of this. We're going to have that demographic grow, as I've said. My plea is we watch and look at those amenities and make sure that we don't make it seem like we're not a welcoming city, and I know we won't, but a welcoming city to that demographic as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Motion to approve the minutes of April 7th?
Move approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion by Lale, second by Patton. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous, and all members are present. Motion to reaffirm and ratify on second reading?
Second.
Second.
Motion by Patton, second by...
Zagarelli.
Zagarelli. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Anything to be removed from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move item B for the purpose of my recusal, please.
Okay. We have a second.
Second.
Motion by Misner, second by Lale. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of item B?
Make a motherf... Second.
Motion by Gess, second by Seaver. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Move approval of item B of consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Lale, second by Gess. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. Okay. Mr. Berry?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The only public hearing this evening. I'll call on the city's Public Services Director, Mr. Chuck Hanson, to present to council a petition to close a portion of Main Avenue Place Southeast prior to council opening this hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor, members of council. This is a public hearing. It's been advertised March 20th, 27th, April 3rd, and 10th. It's a request by Woodland Village LLC to close a short section of Main Avenue Place Southeast. That's essentially right across the railroad tracks here, right off Center Street. Some of you remember the old gas station that's sort of set in a little triangle. This is the little road right beside that. Essentially connects Main Avenue with South Center Street. And this little section is Main Avenue Place Southeast. It's relatively small. It's just a little over 7,000 square feet or .16 acres. Staff recommends approval of the closing, but it is subject to sort of four things. They all are shown on a plat that's in the packet that was prepared by McGill and Associates. With the intersection at South Center Street with Main Avenue, that sort of has to be reworked for truck turning movements. If you think about driving west on Main Avenue, that hard right back on South Center Street would have to get reworked a little bit. And that's been designed and is included in your packet here already on page 189. So, again, reworking that intersection would be one of those items. Reworking a common driveway with the petitioners driveway and Corporative Christian Ministries. There is a driveway that ties into this little section that, again, is taken care of from a design standpoint on this drawing. Reserve utility easement for any water or sewer that's actually in the section being closed. Again, that can be relocated if it's needed to, but I'm not sure there's anything even in there that needs to be reserved. But if we do find something, we need easement for that existing infrastructure. And then the last thing, of course, is just record the plat showing the utility easement. So, we would recommend approval of the closing subject to those four things. And that intersection would have to get reworked before we could officially shut the road down into field, if you will, because of truck turning movement, fire apparatus turning, that kind of thing. Any questions?
Will you have any comments to our advertising?
I've heard nothing, yes, sir. Not sure. I don't see Ms. Terry Taylor. She was part of the submittal process.
Thank you, Mr. Hanson. For the public hearing, we allow 15 minutes for those speaking first, those speaking against the proposal, and then up to 15 minutes for those speaking for the proposal. Then we have opportunities for rebuttal and surrebuttal. With that, I will open the public hearing and ask if there's anyone who would like to speak against this proposal. Is there anyone who would like to speak for this proposal? There being no one desiring to speak, I declare the public hearing closed and ask for motion or discussion. Move to be approved.
Second.
And to discuss, it doesn't look like there's a sidewalk on the north side of First Avenue. Is that correct? So, if you close Main Avenue Place has a sidewalk on it.
I'm sorry. The site plan on page 189 shows a new sidewalk going in that would parallel Main Avenue.
Oh, I got you. Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right. Answer my questions.
Questions or discussion? Motion by Misner, second by Patton. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous.
Moving to departmental reports, I'll call on Assistant City Manager Andrea Sarat to present a vacant building revitalization demo grant.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Mayor and members of council, this is a request that's gone through the Business Development Committee. And this year, you might recall that we have used a lot of those vacant building funds for redevelopment. And here's a project that then has come through our process and really just needs a small amount in order to make some key improvements to bring a building back into significant reuse. So, this is a request on behalf of Jimmy Mitchell, who's a partner in this project. And he is looking to rehab this building, a few specific things in particular. HVAC and then replacing stolen copper, repairing a sinkhole. He had a number of expenses that happened to this building over a period of time. So, he's spent in his group over $300,000 to bring the building back up to standard. This is the building at 890 F Avenue. And if you might recall, this is the Thomasville 8 Building. So, you could get to it from LR Boulevard, taking a left on F. And it's tucked back down in that neighborhood. So, just going through what the vacant building program allows, up to 20,000 right now, or 15% of the eligible project costs. It includes certainly interior improvements as well as exterior improvements. And so, it's a fairly large building, 83,000 square feet. And it's been owned by the Thomasville Furniture Group up until several years ago. Now, they've made these improvements, and the project's eligible for $6,000. So, that's the request that they brought to the Business Development Committee, which recommends approval. The applicant that they have in mind is a furniture manufacturing company that's not currently located in Hickory that will be using the facility, leasing it potentially, and that would be for 40 to 60 employees coming. So, there are jobs related to this particular project. Here's the location of the property, so in our current revitalization area. Here's a couple of photos. It's hard to see this one on the left, but that's the large parking lot, the sinkhole area where it was repaired in the front. That happened as a result of the storm in 2013 in the summer, and then some cracking. Oops, sorry. Cracking and settling here. And then the warehouse space is quite expansive on the inside and will be a good use for furniture manufacturing. So, the request, all the bids are in the packet, and the Business Development Committee felt like this was worthy of that $6,000 grant. And the budget amendment is included for your consideration. So, I'll be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions? I'll make a motion. We approve this grant.
I'll second.
Motion by Wright, second by Seaver. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. That's unanimous. No appointments?
We've got one more department report, Mr. Mayor.
Community policing. I'm sorry.
Call on Police Chief Tom Atkins to come to the podium and update council on community policing and probably talk about the body counts that recently been implemented. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Members of council, Mayor, Mr. Crone. Mr. Misner did tell me it was going to be a short presentation tonight, but I didn't realize it was going to be that short. Probably got overlooked.
Try to keep them happy.
As is, sir. All right. Well, I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you tonight and talk about our community policing efforts in the city of Hickory. And before I go into that, I'd like to talk about our mission statement. I like to share our mission statement with all of our folks that we do presentations and point out a few key words. First of all, we'd like to point out to provide the highest quality of police service to our customers. So, we are always striving to do the best job we can do and do the right things for our customers. Another thing that you'll hear tonight when I talk about community policing is partnerships. Partnerships are very important in our business. You may have heard of Sir Robert Peel and his philosophy, "The people are the police, and the police are the people." So, those partnerships with our community is very important to making sure our folks and citizens are safe within our community. Now, if you averaged out, the city of Hickory is about 40,000 people. Hickory police officers, about 117, so roughly, and I hate that I'm doing math up here in front of you, sir, but roughly 400 or so per police officer, give or take a little bit. Now, my 400 are getting some excellent service, I can tell you that. So, we depend on our community to help us out, be our eyes and ears, and let us know what's going on. Hopefully, we can address their concerns. And the last part of it is maintaining respect for cultural diversity and individual rights and dignity. Always keeping that in mind, that we have a very diverse population, and we must go and maintain those individual rights and dignity for those individuals. Now, I hate to do this when I stand up and do presentations, but I have to define community policing. And when people stand up and define what we're talking about, it's always sort of irritating and uses some things. But community policing has a very wide and broad definition. Many people call it different things, whether it's citywide community policing or one police officer in their department on community policing. So, this came from the Office of Community and Policing Services from DC. And there, again, talks about a philosophy. Now, this is not a program. This is a philosophy. So, it's ingrained in our officers. It's not something that's going to go away. Over my tenure at Hickory Police Department, that philosophy has stood true. So, we're going to maintain that philosophy. So, it's a philosophy that uses partnerships. Again, that word partnerships is very important in policing our communities. And using problem-solving techniques, we try to get to the root of what's causing the issue. Now, we can go out there and just throw a lot of numbers and do some citations and arrests and do some enforcement, but we really need to look at what is causing that root problem. So, that community policing is always looking for those problem-solving issues and techniques to address those issues. And addressing crime, social disorder, and fear of crime. I tell our folks, we have failed if you fear that you're going to be a victim of a crime. Now, obviously, we want people to be smart and be mindful of their surroundings and what they're doing, and lock their car doors, lock their houses, and those type things, so you can prevent crime. But if you are afraid in your own home, we have failed you. So, always addressing that fear of crime is very important to our officers. I could tell you, over my career, I was very fortunate to be part of the original community policing effort in 1990 in the Ridgeview community. Myself and a guy you may have heard of, Merle Hamilton, and four officers, was able to organize a group of highly motivated, highly passionate officers to address issues that were happening in our Ridgeview community. Our Ridgeview community came together and basically held us accountable and said, "You need to address these issues, but we're going to help you." So, that partnership came together, and we were addressing issues. And over that four-year term, or three-year term, we were able to be very successful and recognize that community policing, not just in one area, but the whole city, was important. So, in 1994, the Hickory Police Department went citywide with community policing, breaking our city up in five different zones. And we've stood true and continue to use community policing in all the city today. Now, I'll talk about some community policing efforts that are happening today in our city. One, and I'll just point out a few of these, but our partnerships with our Catawba County Safe Communities Initiative. That's a group that comes together from different law enforcement agencies throughout our county and addresses those violent offenders. And we identify them using our probation and parole officers, and we call them into this very venue right here and tell them that they need to change their behavior or they're going to be a focus of enforcement. But also, we give them alternatives, like our Success Essentials you'll see at the bottom of the screen, where we have our community coordinator, Charles Mackey, that comes together and helps them, individuals, if they want help, to learn how to write a resume, learn how to do a job interview, learn how to present themselves when they go for employment. So, all those are important, but those call-ins that happens right here, and again, we just want them to stop. So, if they want our help, we'll give it to them. But that's a little bit non-traditional. That's not throwing a lot of numbers, going after arrests. That's using some problem-solving techniques to hopefully reduce our violent crime in our cities. reduce our violent crime in our cities around Catawba County. Also, very successful using Hickory Public Schools as our Lunch Buddy program that we partner with our children on Council of Adolescents. We have some of our officers that attend the two middle schools and actually eat lunch every week with an individual student. That student looks forward at that interaction with that police officer every week. So that's very important to establish those early relationships, those positive relationships with our young people. We, again, focus on those violent offenders, repeat offenders, people that continue to do crime and cause disorder in our city. Those are the focus that we need to address, and we go after those individuals. And you know the success of our code enforcement, police code enforcement, working on those broken windows effect, taking really that light in our community, focusing in on properties that may be breeding ground for crime. So those different approach, using that code enforcement, hopefully reducing those calls for service in our neighborhoods. During the current issues and current state of our nation and some of the things that are happening, our officers and staff felt it important to go out and do some presentations to different areas of our communities. First of all, we took an opportunity to go over core values. We do our annual core values training with all of our staff members. We talk about our core values of professionalism, accountability, compassion, and teamwork. And we go over each of those core values with each one of our members every year and talk about different things and how we need to do the right things when we're serving our community. Also, Captain Wisniewski coined a phrase this year for all our officers and staff to remember, is remembering our mission. Going back to that mission statement, that original mission statement saying that we need to provide the most effective police service for our individuals. So that was our theme this year, remembering our mission. We just recently had our Citizens Police Academy Union where we brought our folks in and talked about police-involved shootings and hopefully educated them on some of the dynamics of that issue. Captain Wisniewski and myself also took opportunity, first part of April, to attend a police forum in Raleigh with 60 police chiefs and senior staff to talk about this very issue, trying to get to some outcomes that we need to focus on as a profession within our state. So we were able to network with some of those chiefs, have a good open forum, met with some legislators and talk about some legislation that they're proposing, and hopefully build some positive outcomes out of these issues. Another thing that we did that partnered with Steve Hunt, retired police lieutenant, who is now the director of the multicultural office at CBCC, I talked to him a few weeks ago and said, hey, I want to have a lunch with some students, some young students, and talk about issues and perceptions they have of the police in general. And wanted to interact with them and try to have a good dialogue with those individuals. So it took about seven staff members down. We sat down, broke bread, sat there for about two hours, and finally, I said, I gotta get these officers back to work. There was a good dialogue. It was a very positive thing that came out of it. We had our open house last night for police recruits, and one of those individuals showed up for that open house. So hopefully, we cultivated a police officer out of that interaction. So we were very fortunate, and we're going to build on that with Steve, hopefully develop some training out of that and hopefully have those interactions on a more regular basis. Also looking at opportunities to do that at Linnell Ryan University. Also had a question-answer session with our St. Stevens High School Junior States of America students. Again, young people, very interested in all that happens, going on in our nation. So had a good hour discussion with them and tried to answer some questions and try to give them an understanding and try to just say that we need to learn also, and we need to learn from them how that they want us to police. So again, that partnerships and that relationship is very important for us. Doing presentations at Rotary and as Max Kwanis Club Day, Mac was very courteous to stand when I walked in the room. Thanks, Mac, I appreciate that. That's his little joke. Also, we're attending bi-monthly meetings with a group, a racial justice discussion group. That's very important. We're trying to get our interactions out, trying to understand what our communities are feeling about police, and maybe not so much about the Hickory Police Department, but the police in general. So we take those lessons and learn from them, share with our individuals, our officers, and hopefully have some positive outcomes on both sides. And last, we attended our, Catawba County does a NAACP forum every year, law enforcement forum, where the law enforcement heads of each agency comes together. Obviously, that was a very interesting meeting this year with all the events going on in our nation. So it was a very good dialogue, about two and a half hour dialogue for that forum. Some other activities that we're looking at doing, try to build a relationship and trust with our officers in our community is, and again, our officers are looking for these opportunities. We're going to do pastime with the crowd ads. No, not pack time, pastime, police and students together with the Hickory Public Schools. If the, at a ballgame in May, if you are a student at Hickory High, or City of Hickory, excuse me, Hickory Public Schools, and you come into, the crowd ads are going to let you in free. We're going to have a bunch of officers out there to interact with those students and hopefully build some more positive relationships with our youth. We've been asked to serve on a Saving Our Seed Empowerment Day, which is May 30th of this year. Again, trying to have that positive interactions with our youth, having a breakout session for just the respect and authority and how to act with police officers and other authority figures. So that's going to be a very interesting, they're expecting anywhere from 150 to 300 people. So hopefully, that'll be a very good turnout. Again, we talked about our open house to recruit our officers, continuing our conversations and discussions with all our groups around the city that want to talk about these. These are difficult conversations for both sides, but we have to have those conversations. So we look forward to sitting down with any group that wants to have that. We want to aggressively look at our minority candidates for police officers and other staff, looking to mirror our city as best we can. So going out, looking for, going to African-American, predominantly African-American colleges in our state, having these open houses, having those forums like we did at CBCC, hopefully getting those recruits that want to become police officers. Scenario-based training and sensitivity training for our officers. We wanted to take these situations that we were seeing in our nation and also things that have happened in the past and put those in real-life scenarios and try to replicate what is going on, have our officers learn from those experiences. And hopefully, that training will kick in when that crisis is happening, and they'll do the right thing. And then something coming up, Chris Johnson's group in May, the Young People Integrity Spring Luncheon. So we're looking forward to, again, interaction with our young people. One thing we were on the cutting edge, I'm happy to say, when all this came out in our nation, is our body cameras. We've been exploring the body camera technology in 2013 and trying to figure out what is best for, was the best fit for our organization. Now, just like everything else in technology, there's all kinds of different gizmos out there and stuff that you can pull from. So we were doing some field testing and decided on getting the cameras you see on the screen. That little thing on the side of the collar right, on the picture on the left, is the camera itself. It's about the size of a chapstick or a lipstick case. That's about all the bigger that is. And then it has a power pack that is run either to the belt or to the pocket of the officer that supplies the power to the unit. And if you'll see on the picture to the right, it's kind of hard to see, but it's mounted on his camera on his right side. So it's either, there's a couple of different mounting options you may see the officers do. A very popular one was the one on the glasses, but we found out that if you put them on the glasses, and they go into a place that have sunglasses on to do this. And I see the ceiling. So we had to kind of figure out how to work through that. So they always wear a secondary camera location, mostly on the collar, but you'll see some officers, there's a headband out there that they're wearing. And so all of our officers on our patrol division are equipped with that technology. We were able to purchase that technology through your approval in the end of June of 2014 and was able to get that technology out on our streets, implemented with all of our street police officers on the street in September. So all the police officers out there that is our uniform will have them. Now, we have some other needs that we'll have to expand out a little bit for our criminal investigators that are plainclothes. When they work in a uniformed capacity in off-duty, we'll have to try and equip those officers with those. So we'll have those officers in body cameras. So what body cameras do? We have them depict accurate documentation of police encounters with our citizens. If you see a dash camera, those dash cameras will focus in right there in front of the car. Now, they're good if you're stopping a vehicle, but once you're outside that car, you can turn your recorder on, and that recorder will record up until a certain point audio until you get out of that range of that car. So you're only seeing just directly in front of the car. So the body camera is going, you know, depicting about 90% of the officer's encounters and where he is, or her, or where she may be. But just keep in mind that, you know, there's also other stuff going on outside here. Just think of the NFL game, how many cameras it takes for the referees to make a correct call. So you're only getting one angle. So you may have some other things going on over here, and the officer may turn his head, or her head, or turn her body and capture that. But, you know, it's a lot better than having that camera mounted in front of our cruiser. It helps put some trust into police. You know, we have that cameras out there, we're recording those interactions. So when an officer, there's an allegation against the officer, we are quick to look into that, we're quick to pull those camera videos, those videos up to look at what actually happened and trying to help understand what happened during those incidents. Well, I found out that some people don't realize that we have body cameras. And I know our officers are out there telling them, they're sitting on their heads, on their sunglasses or on their collars, but officers try to tell people that they're being recorded. It kind of controls their behavior, but sometimes, you know, maybe an officer will forget. So we'll have people come in, and people see encounters with the police a little bit differently than we see it. In this case, that recently happened where a lady walked in, wanted to complain on the officer, and we talked to her a little bit and said, you know, we had that, all that action on video. And she said, well, you're not going to see it exactly how I saw it. Well, we're kind of going to see it how it happened. And she turned out and walked out the door, so. So anyway, you know, and it helps us improve our performance of our officers. If there's something that the officer, the supervisor sees that's happening, they can correct their behavior, they can give them some training issues or training suggestions on officer safety and hopefully reduce those encounters with the public that are in a negative way. The camera itself is a, again, you'll see it there on the top picture, they can mount to their sunglasses or clear lenses. It's about a 12-hour battery pack. But the good thing about this, this camera is always recording. It's always buffering. So the officer has the power button on, it's always recording. But when they actually activate the camera itself, it goes back 30 seconds. So if something happens and, you know, something happens right off the bat and I get the camera on, it goes back that 30 seconds. Now, it's not recording the audio part of it until the officer touches the button, but it goes back 30 seconds to do the video. So we'll have the video, hopefully, don't need the audio, but it goes back, that constant buffering. So we're able to catch everything that they interact with when they turn those cameras on. At the end of the shift, they dock their cameras in a charging location in the police department, and it uploads to a cloud, an evidence.com, which is a preferred storage method that we have found during our examination of different cameras and different options there. So you want to ask what's being recorded? All significant encounters with our public, all enforcement contacts. So if we make an arrest, if we issue a citation, if we're doing some type of interaction with our public and we take an enforcement action, we'll record that. Basically, what the officers are told is, once you step out of that car to take a call for service, turn that camera on. It may be something as simple as a barking dog, or a noise complaint, or just an informational thing, but that camera needs to be on when they're interacting with the public. We don't require them, if they're going to walk into a convenience store and get a cup of coffee or use the restroom or something like that, we don't necessarily have them turn that camera on, but knowing that it's always buffering, they can turn it on and go back 30 seconds if something would happen in that convenience store during their time in there. Non-committed time, if they're staying there in the police department, they're not required to record their encounters with other officers. Again, we upload it to evidence.com. It's a cloud, storage-based solution. We're following the retention laws provided by our state and classification. So if we have just a normal encounter with a citizen, we'll classify that as an investigation. It'll retain that video 30 to 60 days, and then it'll give an alert to the officer that it'll be deleted if they want to change that classification, if something would happen between the time they classified it that night or up until the time is deleted. So they have 67 days to decide on that. Any misdemeanors, we'll keep for three years. Felonies, we'll keep for the schedule that our state says we have to keep them. Homicide, say it's a homicide, we keep those things forever. So that'll either be downloaded to a disk or remain in the cloud. Another neat feature that this solution has is it's able to share the video. So an officer has his own account, and he can share the video with the district attorney's office. So no longer do we have to burn a disk, run it to the district attorney's office, and run it to the defense attorney. They can share the video with another individual who has rights, and I dictate who has rights. So the attorneys have rights that are given to them that use, there are defense attorneys that the DAs can share with the defense attorneys under discovery rules. But there's also provisions in there that they can't download it. They can't burn a copy. Also, another good feature of this is it tells you every time somebody watches that video, whether that video was shared, whether that video was downloaded. So it keeps a digital evidence log of everything that's happening with that video. So if an officer takes a video, then goes back at the end of the shift and watches the video to help him or her write that report, or they classify it, it'll show that video was opened up again. So if a supervisor would review the video for training purposes, it'll show that supervisor had opened that video for X number of times during the shift. All right, I'm going to try to show you a sample of a body camera being used during a response to a traffic crash. Now, if you just ate, you might want to, you know, be careful because, again, she's wearing it on her glasses. So she's not only going through those intersections, but she's moving that head back and forth, checking those intersections, making sure that nothing's coming. She, I don't think we'll play it all the way through, but she talks to cars, like, move over, move over, move over. So she's giving a little narrative on all that. But we'll go through that sample video.
What do you mean, mayor cam?
We've come a long way since 1909. That's a city map we ran across a few days ago, thought that we'd share that with you. But technology has definitely made an impact in my career in law enforcement. It's helped solve crimes and helped exonerate people. This is just another piece that we feel is important that the city go ahead and purchase those body cameras, being on the cutting edge of that technology to be able to make sure our police force is doing the right things out there. Can I open up for any questions?
Chief, I just have one. Could you clarify what, how this relates to public records and public access for these videos, for these cameras?
North Carolina public records laws and retention laws kind of dictate what we do. Since these videos are classified as investigative files, they're not released to the public and shown to the public. Different states have different laws. There's a place in Washington State that has very liberal laws that a gentleman continues to request body camera videos from his police department and basically made a YouTube channel out of it. out of it, and you're watching those videos. Which I understand the public records law and the importance to share that information, but also, this is a privacy issue for the citizens we serve. When people call us, they're in their most vulnerable state. We're in people's homes. We don't need to be sharing that out on the internet with our folks. That's my opinion. But we follow, strictly follow the retention laws, the public records laws of the state of North Carolina, as they are written today.
Thanks, Senator.
Are we going to continue to have the dash cams too, or phase them out?
Right now, we had to make a choice, and we thought those were the best option for us. We're going to run it one year for the program and see how much we lose, if we lose anything for the dash cams, and if we think that's going to happen, then we're going to go back and equip the cars with the dash cams and the body cameras. But as you can see, it's kind of hard to get any better than that video on that officer's head, exactly where that, where she's looking on that video, kind of hard to beat. In the video, the actual cameras themselves, at night, don't have a, does not have a feature where it kind of enhances the image or does a night vision type application, because the manufacturer wanted to represent what the officer's actually seeing at night. So, if it's dark, they want to represent that that's what the officer is seeing. Don't want to enhance it so it gives any impression that the officer should have seen something, or there was something there that he should, he or she should have saw, so.
I was just thinking about it. This is pull over a car, and this dash came on the car, suspect flees, and there might be somebody else in the car, something like that.
Sure. And there's something we just have to consider. It's just a matter of fact, it's, you know, we just, those are very expensive. The dash cams are $6,000. The body cameras are 400 or 500. The difference being that the storage, just like a data plan for a cell phone, you got to, you got to have the storage plan and the data, and that's what the real cost is. It's not the actual camera itself, it's the storage and the ability to share the videos and to be able to move those videos around. Because frankly, right now, we're doing dash cams, we get a request from an attorney, we vet it through the DA's office, we have to burn a disk for the old dash cams, and they have to send it to, they have to walk into the DA's office, DA's office had to play it, and so, this is more streamlined, it does that, the digital evidence log of who's watching it and when, so. All right. Thank you.
Matters not on the agenda? General comments?
I just wanted to say one little comment, that I certainly want to thank my city Hickory family for all their support over the past year. Did you hear my family? Really appreciate it, and thank you very much for everything.
We have started our budget process. It's very early, but the amount to create a revenue neutral rate when joined with the valuations, I'm probably going to get in trouble for saying this, but it's 53.95 cents. That is not a tax increase. It balances the value and the rate to bring in the same amount of dollars we brought in last year at 50 cents. The average taxpayer will have 53.95 as the rate and a value that is something around 3.95 percent. Now, let's see, I'm getting, I mean, that's wrong. A value that's somewhere around 70 percent lower. That's very early in the game, and it has nothing to do with, they will agree on, as far away to help us provide the ideal level of service at the ideal frame. And that's where you want to get it. But I did want to mention that that number has been generated.
That's on average. Some are lower, some are higher.
There will be people that will pay more dollars, and there will be people who pay less dollars. But we can't control that. Any other comments?
I'd like to move to the second for the prescribed.
I'll second.
All right, thank you, Mr. Allen. All right. Thank you all for being here.
Freddie, you doing next link?
Sir?
Do you want to give us a tour of the Escalade next link?
I can check. I'm just checking.
Well, I think most of you, somebody's lucky to check.
Yeah, I was going to tell you, it's a program where it's called Screen Cap. You just highlight the area you want, and it's basically like a reporter on your.
Like, you know, on your desktop, you can put that in paint. Their programs are basically just on the video.
Hey, man, you gotta, you gotta get, you gotta.